I'll call the meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people in different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Candy Blankman, Pastor, San Clemente Presbyterian Church.
Would you all please rise and then remain up and follow Councilmember Ward's pledge at least.
Pray with me, please. Oh God, who has power and rule over all things whether we acknowledge it or not, we are grateful to live in a country where debate and public discourse are valued so that our differences are reasoned out in these chambers rather than fought out in the streets. Help these leaders to be guided by true reason and not just effective arguments. Whatever the business of this night, keep these leaders mindful that there is a larger agenda and a greater accountability that we all will answer to. Keep us all mindful that what we do is often shouted more loudly by how we do it. We've been given the extraordinary freedom to do business openly. Help us to take stewardship of this freedom well. Though we may govern in this place at this time, you govern in all places at all times, and as we govern, as they govern, give these men and women the humility to call on your name throughout the business of this night and to attend to your voice of guidance which can be much quieter than other voices. Even in the midst of decreasing resources and serious economic pressures, we know that compared to the most of the world, we are rich and greatly blessed. We give thanks for this city and all the goodness it enjoys. We give thanks for the citizens who are here tonight giving time and energy and attention and talent that contributes to the blessedness of this city. We give thanks for these council and these city employees who work so hard to make San Clemente a city with excellent quality of life. Tonight, for our elected officials, we ask for uncommon vision and uncluttered thinking. We pray that we will make decisions that will benefit the good of the majority of the people, knowing we cannot please all the people all of the time. Keep us from petty arguments, from personal acrimony, or vendetta. In a time when public discourse is so polarized and common sense and civility so rare, help them focus on the issues before our city and not personalities or places of power and authority. Help them keep their vows to serve this city well. Help all of us who surround them to give them the best information possible for governing well. Give them courage to stand alone when necessary, humility to submit to others when needed, and the wisdom to know the difference. In the name of the One who rules and reigns over everything, we pray. Amen.
Please put your hands over your heart. Ready to begin.
.........................................................
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Hamm. Councilmember Ward. Mayor Pretend Bane.
Here.
Mayor Swartz.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
If I could really quick, Mayor, I just want to have one introduction if I may. Lieutenant Manhart, will you come front and center, please? So, it's my pleasure to introduce the new Chief of Police Services, Lieutenant Edward Manhart. He started last Friday. The city did a press release today providing a little bit of a biography with Lieutenant Manhart. He's been with the Sheriff's Department since 1998, and as the press release indicates, is no stranger to the San Clemente contract, serving as Deputy Sheriff from the city from 2004 to 2011. And also, Manhart was a motor deputy coordinating complex traffic plans and supporting the city during special events, as well as serving as a field training officer and assisting patrol trainees during their transition from custody to operations. And so, it's my pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Manhart.
Mayor, City Council, I'm honored to be the next Chief of Police for San Clemente Police Services. 2004, I transferred from custody to operations. I requested to come to San Clemente because of the challenges and opportunities. And while I got down here, I worked here for six, over six years. I was, as you mentioned, I was a field training officer. I was a motor deputy, worked on the special enforcement team, direct enforcement team. The city absolutely did not disappoint at all. The city is responsible for me being the officer that I am today. So, I have an opportunity and a desire to give back, and I'm absolutely glad to be here. Lieutenant Mike Peters, now Captain Mike Peters, has done an outstanding job establishing and cultivating the relationships with the community. I will absolutely continue to do that, and that's the best possible relationship to solve problems in the community, so I will absolutely continue to work towards that. And once again, I'm very, very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Chief, I just wanted to, for the City Council, I want to welcome you, you know, to, back to our city. And our interviews that we did with you, I know you're going to hit the ground running, and as I expressed, you're going to need to. So, I look forward to us working together quite a bit as we're working on the issues of the city, and I appreciate you being here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a toll road update?
So, Mayor, so, Councilmember Ferguson and I had our, our second TCA meeting last Thursday night, and it was a pretty dull meeting up until the end. At that time, Councilwoman Ferguson and I made a motion in light of the Los Angeles Times article that was out last week about the fiscal mismanagement. And it was a motion similar to what Councilmember Ward had made, I think in June before that, to basically request a third-party financial audit and to cease all consulting contracts that the TCA had. For folks out there that maybe don't know what's going on or hadn't read the article yet, you know, it came to light from records that the city received and through the Los Angeles Times article that, you know, we're paying the TCA consultants basically to read the news to the tune of 1,300 hours a year at $185 an hour, that there was double billing, there was billing for 28 hours in a day. And Councilwoman Ferguson and I, and the rest of this council are rightly concerned that taxpayer and public funds are being used in that manner. So, we requested that motion. Unfortunately, the board voted against having that motion. However, at the very next TCA meeting, those items are going to be considered for board discussion, and hopefully, the TCA board will follow our lead in taking action to audit those contracts and stop funding. Yesterday, a motion was filed by both the city and the Reserve to bifurcate trial. I know we haven't reported out those litigation matters in a while, but we've made a motion to bifurcate, meaning separate the issues so that we have an early determination on some of the legislative authority issues that are outstanding. And our hope is that we can get some of those issues heard sooner rather than later since this litigation is coming up on almost two years now. So, I want to thank Councilwoman Ferguson for making the motion with me. It was certainly a hard-fought motion that we lost and continuing what Councilmember Ward did before that. So, come to the next TCA meeting. Hope to see you all there to give your input on what will hopefully be a win for the city.
Next is a report from Eileen Kowas, Pier Pride Board President, concerning replacement educational signage on the San Clemente pier.
Hello. I'm Eileen. Hi, Eric, thanks. I'm Eileen Kowas, and I'm from Pier Pride, and I want to thank you so much for having us tonight. I've got two people I want to introduce, two other board members. I've got Jim Nielsen, our treasurer, and Peggy Vance, our past president.
I don't know those people.
I know, that's why I wanted to introduce them. Thank you so much for having me. Tonight, I wanted to give you an update on our pier signs. But before I do that, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for our partnership with the city. Pier Pride was born when the city lost their redevelopment funding, and together we do good things, and this is one of the good things we're doing. Thank you. I also want to thank Samantha, Samantha Thomas Wiley. She was with me every step of the way. She was really very, very helpful. And I want to thank Eric, he was there the last step of the way. So, one other, two other people I want to thank, and those are the people who came up with the idea for the signs. I think you know them, PSI, Public Safety Industries, also known as Rick Wilson and Company. Rick did the doggy bag signs that are on the trail. Rick came up with the best idea. Instead of a sign, we're now going to have a rail cuff. So, the new signs are going to look very much like this. They're going to be a little bit longer, and hopefully, they will discourage vandalism. The other person I want to thank is our designer of the signs, and that's Scott Fisher Keller. So, now, let's take a look at the signs. Our goal with the, the, perfect. Our goal with these signs was to just update them, to replace the damaged signs that are currently on the pier. All the text is completely the same. Some of the images have been changed and updated when we couldn't get original art. When we did, when we launched this project, we were so pleased that the community stepped up to help us. Each sign has an individual sponsor. As you can see, the California Gray Whale was sponsored by Dana Wharf Sport Fishing, whale watching and sport fishing. Catalina Express took the Catalina Island sign. How do I, next? Oh, I'm sorry. Dolphins, Dolphins was born, was sponsored by the Kirk Steel family in honor of their son. Seagulls and Pelicans, we're so proud to have Ocean Festival on the rails this go-round. The Casa sign was sponsored by Casa Romantica. West Reef, Dana Point Headlands, a very, very generous anonymous supporter. And the last sign is our Seal Rock and Cotton's Point sign, Rotary Club of San Clemente, and we're so proud of each and every one of our sponsors. They stepped up when nobody else would. Next steps, with your blessing tonight, we will begin fabrication tomorrow morning. We are looking to install them in mid-May before the high season. The unveiling will be May 19th. I hope all of you will come. Fisherman's has been very helpful in offering a brunch, and Pier Pride will be back before you. We have a fishing line recycling canister project we're taking to Beaches Parks and Rec, and then we'll be back in May to present that to you as well. There are a few more steps after that. We are looking for a project this year. We, rumor has it that the city is going to be refurbishing the restrooms at the end of the pier. We are very interested in that project. We would very much like to participate. We've been in touch with the city. We're, we'd like to start our fundraising efforts to the tune of maybe $50,000. Longer term, we're looking at the Pier Bowl specific plan, and we have some great ideas for refreshing the pedestrian undercrossing at the, at the, at the beginning of the pier, and we would love to share that with you. So, thank you so much for having us. Thank you for your partnership, and if there are any questions.
You mentioned some steps that this has to go through, and I think I skipped a couple of them. You mentioned something about Parks and Rec?
I'm sorry if I confused you. The only thing that has to go through Parks and Rec at this point is the fishing line recycling canisters.
Okay.
These, all we're doing right now is replacing the seven original signs that are on the pier. Nothing new is happening other than that.
So, none of this has gone by any of our commissions or staff yet?
I worked with Samantha Thomas Wiley throughout the entire project.
I guess, Eric, what I would be concerned with is, we're being asked tonight for approval, and we really haven't seen them yet or gone through this program. So, I, I would appreciate like a staff report. I think that would be the proper way to go through it rather than a presentation.
So, if that's the council's desire, we can definitely come back at the next meeting and have an agenda report that the council can go through it in more finer detail. This particular proposal before us tonight is just replacing the existing signage. As Eileen indicated, there were some additional wants that were on top of that, which we said need to go through BPR Commission. Those are new things outside of the purview of existing footprint. But if the council would like it to come back as a staff report, we can definitely facilitate that.
I'm just concerned with how it fits, the cuff, and whether any of it could cut anyone, anything like that. We really need to look at that.
I do know Samantha did work with Randy Little on this as well, so maintenance is completely on board with the installation and everything else in terms of how it's fabricated. So, I do know that that also was reviewed by staff.
I'm, I'm just, I'm thrown by being asked to approve something from a presentation that just flashed before us. I don't think I can do that. I mean, I like what I see, but I need to see more.
Yeah, Eric, first off, Eileen, thanks for a great presentation. They look awesome. I'm very excited about them.
Thank you.
But to echo a little bit what Ms. Ward's saying is, in years past, we haven't advertised on city property. Are, are this, could existing signs have advertisement on them, or is this something new?
I don't believe the existing signs do. I can't say that with 100% certainty.
Okay. So, I gotta echo Kathy's concerns, which is, I think this needs to be a staff report. I don't know that we've ever done anything as a presentation before and approved it.
I believe the doggy bags have advertising on them. Isn't that correct, Eileen?
Yes, it is.
The doggy bags, so we do have a practice of that. I think they're beautiful. I think they're, Pier Pride's a great partner with the city. I love the work you do. I trust they're going to be just even better than the last one. So, I actually support approving these tonight if we're doing that. So, thank you for your wonderful volunteer work and fundraising.
I wanted to say thank you as well. Pier Pride is one of the organizations in town that's doing tangible good. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Look forward to the city working with you on the bathrooms as well. I think the signs look great. Did we have any approvals for the Historical Society when they had the project or the windmill that they did on the Ole Hanson?
It did eventually come to the City Council. It went to the Planning Commission and the City Council.
And that was required by a specific code, historical?
Correct, as it relates to the historical property of Ole Hanson Beach Club.
Any code that requires any approvals for these signs to be replaced?
So, not that off the top of my head, no. But I know that there could be concerns because we don't have a policy in place as it relates to advertising. So, like in the doggy dispenser situation, we brought that forward as a staff report to have the council deliberate on locations, how the signs looked, how they read with regards to the sponsorship process. Again, you know, and if council wants us to bring it back as a staff report, we have no problem doing so to facilitate that at the first meeting in April.
See, I don't, I don't think it needs, sorry, Mayor, just one quick. I don't think it needs a staff report. I don't think it needs to come back. I think there is precedent for advertisements. I mean, this is a situation where we have people in the community that are being active and trying to help the city maintain the pier, which I think needs to be encouraged, and not necessarily go through the additional red tape. So, if we need to get, if we need to get a policy in place, I think we need to do that coming forward. But I'm, I'm fine with the signs as they stand. I understand Chris and Kathy's concerns, but I hate setting a precedent of telling people, "Thank you for all your work," and then go back and go through this process when we haven't told them upfront that that needed to be done.
Yeah, and I'm, and I want to add on to, I'm concerned that it's coming directly not through Beaches Parks and Rec Commission and being signed up, being referred to us. That's, why did it bypass the commission?
In this particular case, I'll take responsibility for that since it was replacing like for like, and there were no significant changes with regards to that. That's why we brought it forward as a special presentation. As I indicated, to Pier Pride, the additional wants were new things outside of that that would need to go to the BPR Commission to deliberate on before coming to council for recommendations. As she indicated, there was an additional sign that they wanted that wasn't part of the footprint today, as well as the fishing line, I'll call them dispensers, that were new as well. So, we talked and we said we could, you know, take those to the BPR Commission and then bring those back at a later date to the council after the BPR Commission has deliberated.
Okay. As far as advertising goes, and we, we've done it on, we did it on the trashcans. I remember when I was on BPNR, we had the movement out there, we had, and we had corporation pay for them, and they got their, their, their name on them to do that. So, I'm, you know, I lean toward, I don't have an issue with, you know, if someone wants to pay to advertise, it covers the cost of us putting those signs out there. I don't have, I really don't have a problem with that. And then, I, I, I do have a concern regarding, I feel it should have gone through Beaches Parks and Rec, but since it's already here and it's only, and we're only going to authorize replacement of the signs that are already there.
That is correct.
We're not adding anything new to the, to the pier. So, I will go ahead, although I am disappointed that it didn't go through proper channels, I would go ahead and, and support it for tonight. With that being said, is there a motion?
This is just under special presentation.
No, I think you're just receiving it and not asking that it be brought back so that doesn't take action.
All right. Dan, did you have something else?
No, I just know if this is the right time just to put a note somewhere that maybe in the action agenda to look at a policy going forward to make sure that Chris and Kathy's and Steve's concerns are addressed.
Maybe what we can do is twofold, hearing the council out and clear that when we go back to the BPR Commission to deliberate on the additional wants, we can begin tasking the BPR Commission to talk about a policy as it relates to advertising on public spaces that are under their purview, to bring back to the council at a later date.
Just, I'd like to point out to staff that this, the pier is a historic property and it does have a historic overlay. That was my thinking of why it should have gone through the channels, but I'll defer to it.
I'll double-check with our zoning administrator to make sure it's compliant. If the council's okay, if there is no issues, we'll proceed. If the zoning administrator brings up a concern, we'll circle it back.
I'm good, I just wanted to bring that up. We're not talking about that. Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communication, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation.
I do have cards.
Okay, and before I start, Eric, did you, or did Scott want to report out of closed session?
Well, we could do that now, Mayor. That's item number five. Is that all right, Jolene?
Yes. I'm good.
Yeah, we'll do that now. The council took no reportable action in closed session except the following. The council asked me to reiterate a statement that, that our office has made late last week regarding the city's commitment to follow the law in the Ninth Circuit case of Martin versus Boise. That case was a case involving the arrest of homeless people in Boise, Idaho for status crimes, i.e. sleeping and camping in public. And the excerpt from that case that, that I think's most important that council wanted us to reiterate was this one. The Ninth Circuit said, "As long as the homeless plaintiffs do not have a place, a single place where they can lawfully be, the challenged ordinances apply to them, effectively punish them for something which they may not be convicted under the Eighth Amendment, sleeping, eating, and other innocent contact. Even where a shelter is unavailable, however, an ordinance prohibiting sleeping, lying, sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular times may be constitutionally permissible." So, what that case says and what the council wanted to reiterate and affirm is that in order to arrest people for sleeping or camping in public, the city must have available to them shelter beds. That said, Boise, the Boise case does not afford any individual the ability to damage public facilities or, or create nuisances on public facilities. To that end, the council directed us within a very few days, i.e. before it meets again, to have addressed both facets of this decision. One is the provision of adequate interim shelter for people who are camping in public, and the second facet is to make sure that we have law enforcement to back up the city's ordinances and municipal code when it comes time to confront people who are in violation of camping or sleeping. So, we're committed and the council directed that we take both those actions to identify availability of shelter beds and also to, to engage with law enforcement to make sure that they'll be there for us when it comes time to activate our code.
Yeah, and to clarify just a little bit more on that.
Thank you.
We have determined a method by which we believe we'll be able to satisfy the requirement to have local shelter beds, and we've directed staff to put that in place immediately.
Thank you, that was it, yeah. They involve, they involve negotiations with, with providers and real estate owners, and so that'll be subject to disclosure once they're consummated.
Thank you.
That's not private, all right? It has to be disclosed. There's nothing private about that. That's an open session, either.
We have speaker cards.
You're now hiding from us what's required from me. Scott Smith to the press.
Mary Frank, I can't, Franta.
Councilmembers, Mayor Swartz, my name is Mary Franta. Can you hear me? And I'm a resident of San Clemente.
I can't, I can hear you, but it's difficult because they're still talking back there.
Can I just say my thing?
All right, you have many important matters to discuss tonight, but the most important item is on the agenda on page nine, item 12, titled Enforcement of Camping Ordinances. This should be your number one priority with the decisions that you make tonight. By the end of this meeting, I urge you to come up with a decision on what to do with all the people who are illegally camping in tents on the grand of the Ole Hanson Beach Club in North Beach. This is not a campground. These people do not belong here. If we need to declare a state of emergency in order to legally remove these vagrants from our lawn, please do it. Do it tonight. This situation is getting worse by the day, and if it gets to a point, it's irreversible. We see that in San Francisco, we see that in Seattle, we see it in Portland. I don't want to see it happen here. We need to decide on where to put an emergency homeless shelter. It can be a temporary spot until we decide on a permanent location. The sooner we get these people off the lawn and off our public spaces, the better. Here's a solution that will take less than 24 hours. Put up a military cell tent on the campground, San Mateo or Calafia. Get the kind of tent that will house 20 people or more. I know you do have to staff it with some type of appropriate personnel, but also, the police must help with supervision, at least in the beginning phase. We don't know who these people are, but they are anarchists. Or you can immediately lease an empty warehouse in the RSE industrial area, or you can haul in trailers. Please keep the homeless shelters away from our schools and kids. Our children should not be placed in a collision course with any of these people. There are many of solutions to this problem, but what I urge all of you to do tonight is to decide where to put the shelter and to open it ASAP. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Anna Maria De Cipres. I'm a resident here in San Clemente. I am very much in, I also have my colleagues and students with me. We are also very committed and with the community about the major topic this evening, but I hope you let us indulge for a few moments about something else we're very passionate about, which is beekeeping. I'm an urban farmer and beekeeper trained at UC Davis Masters in Beekeeping, and in the last six years, I've been serving in Orange County as a bee removal and rescuer for hives that are in unwanted spaces. And I was here last, at the end of last year with my graduates, proposing that the ordinance for San Clemente be updated to allow residential beekeeping. At the time, the council agreed that they would love to work together on this, and so tonight, we're here to offer you our work that we've done on the ordinance, which includes... that we've done on the ordinance, which includes, and I'll go through briefly, some of the revisions that we've suggested, basically removing the prohibition of keeping bees in residential spaces. And it's also categorized by the different types of residences, residential law, et cetera. We've also developed a best management practices guide that can be given to anyone interested in taking on hobby beekeeping, which in, in the guide, it provides a wealth of resources on good practices, educational resources, considerate hive management, where to set up a hive, where is a good location, how to prevent swarms, robbing, et cetera. And also, myself and my colleagues, my students here are happy to work with the city to develop quarterly trainings for any community members that want to learn in person. And we can also help develop evergreen online videos that can stay on the website, that's accessible. So it's not just a, here's a book and read it and figure it out. We really want people to feel activated and engaged and supported. And why are we so passionate about this? Well, other counties or other cities in Orange County have successfully implemented residential beekeeping. And as we all know, that honeybees are responsible for pollinating the majority of our crops in California and worldwide. And so creating stable populations here, especially in our state, only encourages a sustainable and regenerative food supply for our future. San Clemente is a good space, good place with wide open spaces, and I believe a community that's excited to support the earth and each other. Thank you.
I've got Karen Kenan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is Karen Kerwin, and I've been asked to come here tonight by Eva O'Keefe because she could not make it. I'm requesting action on an item that was agreed to yet seems to have fallen by the wayside. In December of 2017, Eva O'Keefe and Tony Nelson of Capo Cares presented a request to council and received conceptual approval for a Camino de los Marias beautification project. Per the city manager's email to Sandy Marquez of Capo Cares in August of 2018, the item was budgeted, yet nothing has been done. At this point, I want to make sure, because you are in the process of developing a new budget, to make sure those budgeted funds remain there for the purpose that the council gave its conceptual approval, and that is to beautify the Los Marias area from Camino Maracosta all the way to Caen Nuevo. That area has been greatly upgraded by independent retailers, yet we do have some vacancies and there are some blighted areas. We were basically hit with a big blight with Kecory and Theater, and as you know, homeless moved in there and we had that problem. We have the hospital, and that's vacant with a fence around it. We have medians in that area that are not maintained. I know that there used to be alphabetical categorizing of the areas and how they were maintained, where A being top notch, B being, and I believe Los Marias have been determined to be C. So if that's still in, in line, I would like to move it up to A, and I'd like to have the council take action on what it previously agreed to. I have some slides. I'm going to paraphrase them, so not to bore you. And I'd like to go through them now. Next slide. What does this entrance, our front door, what does that say about San Clemente? Right now, it's not saying anything good. We have had Caltrans build these monoliths of ghetto walls off the freeway. And you get off the freeway and what do you encounter? Of course, the homeless. And so we need police, more enforcement with hitchhiking and begging on that corner. And then we have the medians that are really blighted, they're not maintained, they're weeded. And it's, it's, it would make a big difference to the appearance of the town and to not continue any blight in that area. Next slide. Why should you care? You should care because there are a lot of tax dollars now on the Camino de los Marias area, and there could be a lot more. If we get our act together, more people, more retailers might come there. I can't believe I've run out of time, but I'm going to ask you, please, please get on this.
Thank you. And Ms. Marquez was responded to, and the project is ongoing and it's already scheduled.
Woo-hoo. Thank you.
Jean James.
Evening, Mayor Swartz. Evening to the council members. It's fairly obvious our assembly of reprobates and lost souls at North Beach continues to grow. I'm quite confident with a majority of competent, caring, and ethical council members. We can overcome the nonsense of the ACLU and a Clinton-appointed judge who is intent on getting his photo in the paper and being engaged in social engineering at the cost of the specialness of this city. I'm thankful for council member Ferguson, Mayor Pro Tem Bain, and Mayor Swartz for your efforts in this. Kudos to removing the vegetation at North Beach today. Kudos for the maintenance that was done on the hill leading up to Ole Hanson yesterday. As I sit there and watch that, the one thing that bothers me is we have five or six city workers sitting there waiting to do that work on the clock as we handle these reprobates with kid gloves, to be very honest with you. I would like to offer a couple suggestions from a crime prevention perspective. As much as I hate to say it, I think one of the things we need to look at is going with decomposed granite and sharp vegetation on the embankment leading up to Ole Hanson. Otherwise, it's just a motel for them. I'd also like for you to consider contracting with a security guard company to monitor these areas of camping. Of course, they would have no arrest authority and should not engage or intervene in any criminal activity, but they could be the watchful eyes for OCSD. And contact police services at a moment's notice. This would be a resource for $15 an hour versus $260,000 a year, which a deputy cost us. I'd like for you also to consider illuminating wherever we have these, these clusters of urban campers, possibly illuminating them with the type of floodlights and generators you see at construction sites in the, in the evening. This would be done for the security and safety of these individuals, not necessarily to harass them. I think if creative minds got together, we could mitigate the impact this situation has on us and still live within the confines of Boise and, and Judge Carter's rulings. But we cannot live in fear of a slimy organization like the ACLU. Thank you very much.
Mary Ann Dabney. Followed by Mary Ann, because we're running, going to be running out of time. We're going to have to put some to the end. Following Mary Ann will be Brent Coastline.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, neighbors.
A couple of questions for the city council to help us understand. Can you inform us, citizens, how do we determine which homeless San Clemente is responsible for housing? The temporary or permanent housing that we're discussing, will that be allowed to also house registered sex offenders and those that have been confirmed to have committed violent crimes? In the case of Martin versus the city of Boise, the plaintiffs were residents of Boise. Do the homeless plaintiffs in our current lawsuit actually have standing? Dwayne Nichols has said he's from Arizona, came to San Clemente for a vacation. Are we to house all the homeless who want to live at the beach? This truly seems to be a federal issue. I'd like to present that for your consideration. Thank you.
Brent. After Brent will be Maura McCulley.
Thank you, Mayor and council member. I won't be very long, you guys. My name is Brad Conso. I'm COO for Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, California Properties. And in that role, I oversee where we place offices and maintain our offices from Santa Barbara all the way down to Chula Vista. And we have offices in Santa Barbara, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Santa Monica. And so unfortunately for us, dealing with the homeless is not a new phenomenon. I was asked to come here today to let you know the challenges we've been having with our San Clemente facility, but clearly, sadly, it doesn't seem like that's necessary because you're clearly aware of it already. I want the, the council to know that we are proud to be part of San Clemente. We love to be part of the communities that we serve. And for that, we have taken steps to make our office less inviting to the homeless, so that we don't encourage it. I agree with the need to find places and shelters for people to sleep. The problem we're having, though, with our San Clemente office is people relieving themselves. And we have staff members that are now calling in sick because they don't want to come to work, because they're afraid of what they'll be confronted when they get to the front door. We have photos that are appearing online with these homeless people in the act of relieving themselves with our logo. So again, we're very proud to be part of the San Clemente community, and we want to do our part to help with this issue. We look to continue to improve our environment. And I just wanted to go on record that we're here to help in any way we can. And thank you for taking your time.
Thank you very much. Maura, after Maura is Craig Neal.
Good evening, council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm here with my old fashioned handy dandy spiral notebook. So I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach, but I'm a lifelong, I'm a lifelong resident.
I'm sorry. Officer, would you please escort those out?
The person that said, "Sit down" first.
Thank you.
I don't want to lose any of my time, so I hope you, okay. So I was, as I was saying, I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach, but a lifelong resident of San Clemente and Capistrano Beach. I'm a master's educated social worker by profession. And for the last 10 months, I've been volunteering my time to get to know some of the homeless in Dana Point and San Clemente. So in this capacity, I've had the opportunity to get to know a lot of our homeless residents. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about some of them. I've focused my time lately in North Beach. So everyone I tell you about tonight are people that are now residing at North Beach. So today, by memory, I tallied up the folks that I know. There's probably even some I'm forgetting, so there's probably even more than I'm telling you about. And I am going to run out of time, but I'll hopefully do part two and part two later. So I know 29 people from North Beach alone. Of those 29, 12 of them are born and raised here. There might be even more that I just don't know that about yet. Others have been here for years. Others are from other parts of South Orange County. And I know of four who are not from the area at all. None of them are from the riverbed. Nine of them are disabled, certified disabled, and more of them may be, but I just haven't learned that yet. Seven of them are seniors, two of them are veterans. Five people out of all of that have none of those designations. So they're not local, they're not senior, they're not disabled, they're vets. That's five out of all of them. So I want to tell you about a little, about some of them. So Neil, Neil is one of the alcoholics who you'll see down at North Beach. He thinks alcohol is the only thing that can help him with his mental illness. He has PTSD from being raped at age 18. And he also has schizophrenia or bipolar disorder. He's been diagnosed with both at different times. You may see him drunk sometimes down there, but he's never misbehaving. He's one of the quiet ones. He's not a loser. He's a struggling human being. A lot of you may know Wilson, and by the way, I'm using fake names. A lot of you may know Wilson. He's a local guy, born and raised here, and he's legally blind. He's articulate and he's very kind. No one would ever call him a freeloader, I would hope. So David, David has, oh, okay, excuse me. David is one of the guys who is from out of the area. He was homeless here before, a few years ago, when he was drinking. He recently, though, had been living with family out of state until he was diagnosed with cancer. At this part, I'm not sure why, but for some reason, he wanted to get his care at Scripps. I don't know if he had a history there or what. But he came back to get his care for his cancer at Scripps. He stayed for a little while in a shelter in Escondido, but he didn't feel safe there. So he had it up here where he had been homeless before. Shoot, I wanted to finish telling you about him. I will in part two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Neal. After Craig will be Brad Mullamuth.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Craig Neal. I'm a homeowner in the North Beach community. Wasn't always fortunate enough to own property in town. I've been down a rough road in the past. I've been homeless. I've slept in my car. I've scraped up change to buy Top Ramen without water. So I know what it's like. I would like to talk about some issues that we have in town. And it's, it's not really about homelessness. It's about the drug problem, all right? We have a dope problem in this town. I took my daughters, my three daughters, down to the beach on Saturday, and we found a syringe cap. The entire time, we're down at the beach, wondering if my daughters are going to step on a syringe or not. And that's something that, you know, I'm not super proud of, but it's, it's a reality of what we have here. I think if we enforce the dope dealing that's going on, particularly in the North Beach parking lot and also at the bridge at Mariposa, I believe that we could eliminate a lot of our problems. If we take the dope away, those guys will leave. They're not going to be hanging out here because they're way too comfortable right now. Way too comfortable. That's it.
After Brad will be Wilken Elder.
Okay, I'll get to the home issues in a second. But item B, I want to just put on notice that item B is illegal. When closed session of anticipated litigation is going on, you must disclose the parties. You must post availability of the complaint or the statement that led to the reason the city knows about it, and that must be available for public inspection. And the names of the parties must be disclosed. This is a sham, and it's been going on for 20 years here. It's time for this council to demand that the disclosure of the parties be made. So that also applies to number C. As to the homeless, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to find a solution. And the solution is to file an emergency by the council, to find a site, to provide potties, water, and whatever else Mr. Smith declares is necessary to, to beat the, or to comply with the federal mandates. We have a lot above the U-Haul. It's two acres. We could have that ready in two days. Why isn't the council taking action? Why is this council not proactive? Why are they constantly reactive instead of proactive? More importantly, the solution has been, apparently you might have suggested that today, but we weren't told what you suggested. It was closed session. There's nothing illegal about coming out and telling us what the city council is proposing. And because it's not litigation, it should have been done in a public hearing, not a closed session hearing. I object to this council constantly putting things in closed session when legally they can't do it. And if Mr. Smith can't get it right, let's get a lawyer that can. It's not a knock on Mr. Smith, but he has to do more than just comply with council. He's got to tell council when they're violating the law. And I've now pointed out two different areas where, in my view, the council tonight has violated the law. As to the homeless shelter, let's find a spot. Let's make it available on an emergency basis. Let's give our sheriffs the authority to remove people that are, are on our public lands that aren't at that shelter site. And I don't know what's holding us up, but if you have to meet two days from now, 24-hour notice if you feel that's required, meet on Thursday. Give 24-hour notice tonight that you're going to find a solution on Thursday. Meet again on Thursday. You could actually meet tomorrow night at seven o'clock. But this council should not sit here and not comment on this. They should state what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and take action, not sit back quietly. Remember, the Brown Act does not stop you from commenting on things. It just stops you from taking action. So I expect more from this council. And I know you're capable of it. Let's represent the citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a Wilken there? After that is a, our last speaker, Camper Shafazi.
Hi, my name's William Elders. My first time appearing in front of the council today, so happy to be here. Thanks for your service. I'm a proud owner of real estate in North Beach and very happy where we've come to this point. Honestly, we've all strived very hard to make North Beach a great place to live, a very safe place to live. And over the last couple of weeks, I don't feel so safe. I have a newborn daughter of three months old and a seven-year-old daughter, which I continue to walk to the beach every day and either see a naked homeless man or somebody smoking crack. So what I'm asking for today is not just to complain, but what I'm asking for is some attention to clean up the North Beach facilities at the beach, number one. Number two, to provide a solution to the homeless issue. And number three, designate additional police resources to the area. So hopefully you can consider that. Thank you.
David Thompson.
David Thompson, San Clemente, California. Having been very neutral in the whole thing with North Beach and the homeless, being aware, watching a lot, I just want to point out one thing. I've nearly been run over by people driving nearly 40 miles an hour in the parking lot, taking pictures, not looking where they're going. It was a white Suburban with black wheels, GMC. I've seen people where they've, and witnesses, I've seen the after effects and I've talked to people where they've been firebombed, people that have been stalked and harassed because they're homeless. I'm not for the enabling of homeless. I understand it's a dance, working through this whole thing. I've worked with school on wheels, with tutoring homeless kids. We've had kids get four rides to Harvard because of academic achievement. I'm for people working out of their places. I understand as a homeowner, what it's like having what's going on here. So I'm sympathetic to both sides, but the vigilanteism, the harassing, people following people for hours at a time, taking photos, stalking people, driving them nuts, to me, that's going too far. I have a lot of respect for our brothers in blue, and I understand the situations where hands can get tied and the incessant calls all the time. So I get it. I understand, but I just want to point that out. It's not okay to attack other people. To me, that's crossing line. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne.
Can we have a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye. And the city attorney already did his closed session. I think that was all. Is that correct? Okay. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And the public has requested the removal of item I.
I?
Yes.
And I'd like to request the removal of the city council minutes A.
Was it just, was A1?
Yes, A1 from February 19th. I can cite the page if you'd like.
No, 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 that's okay. So A1.
6B2.
All in?
I'll move that we move the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion is made by councilmember Bain, is seconded by councilmember Pam. All in favor? Motion carried unanimous.
So the minutes, A1.
Thank you, Ms. Bain. I'd like to recommend a change in the motion on page 319, 196A1-3. And it's the motion on the item for legislative advocacy services. And in the parentheses, councilmember Ward voting no. I'd like to correct that into councilmember Ferguson voting no. And I'd like councilmember Ward's input on that as well, since she's included in this motion and vote. Thank you.
First, it's actually page eight, I believe, and not page three is the motion.
I read the entire page on the footnote below.
1-8. I reviewed the tape. We agreed that it would go with whatever it said. All of us said aye. I then turned to the mayor and said, "I'm voting no." And I believe the reason I did that is I misunderstood the motion. The second part of it, if you looked at it, says, "Council determined that any contract renewal will need to be approved by council rather than the city manager." I thought that was a complete comeback, that the whole entire contract was going to come back. And so I turned around and voted no. Because it doesn't change anything, I will let that stand, because that is what I said. So I did review the tape. Of course, I would not ever vote against our advocacy services. I'm completely for them and have been at all the time. But I did say that. But I misunderstood what we were voting on is what I believed when I reviewed the tape. So I'll let it stand.
We sounded an awful lot alike. I reviewed it three different times. I was certain I voted no. And I know there were others here that night that could vouch for that. But I don't want to argue about it. I'll let it stand if it needs to.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I watched the tape as well and Kathy's.
It was really hard.
Kathy's right. It was hard and it was all talking at one time. So I voted yes on that item. So if we'd like a chance to revote with an understanding, I can call it back and we can fix it and we can move on. What I don't want to have happen is changing votes in minutes. So I'm willing to call it back. We can resolve it. Everybody can vote how they want to and we can hopefully move on from there.
It won't change it either way. So can we call it back tonight or we have to put it on a future agenda?
I think you'd have to ask that it be agendized for reconsideration next time, but it would be in order tonight. That motion would be all right tonight.
The contracts have been signed by the mayor.
Yeah.
So I'm not, you know, I, with the statement that, you know, I would never vote against our contracts, but I did say, "I'm voting no," because I thought you were bringing them back.
Yeah, so basically if we revoted, it'd be 4-1.
It'd be the same.
So.
With me voting no.
Right.
So I'm going to support Laura's motion, which is that we change the vote to more accurately reflect what actually happened, which was 4-1.
Why don't we just, can we just make a notation in our minutes that we've adjusted the vote is 4-1 with Laura opposing?
No.
So recognizing that that's what really was the vote was, we're not changing the vote, we're just recognizing what it was. We're correcting it.
So I just want to jump in. I would definitely be uncomfortable with that just because I don't want to get into a situation and a precedent be set where councilmembers are trying to change their votes at the next meeting. So I think what I have is, and I understand that contracts have been signed, but I'm trying to come up with a simple but elegant solution to fix this. We call it back, have a revote, the vote is corrected, and we move on and we're not changing votes.
Fine, go ahead and add it to the next agenda for the next meeting to have it voted on.
I just, I want to put. It'd just be on consent, and it's not too late to reconsider because you continued the minutes from last time to this time, so you're still on time for that.
You're still on time for what?
To reconsider it at your next meeting.
Okay, so I can do what I just said.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so now, Chris, item B.
Do we need a motion reconsidered? We're good? Okay. Yeah, item 6B2. I saw Mr. McGuire in the audience, so I'm sure he's going to comment on this.
You know, I think the code does require a motion to reconsider.
Okay. So I'm going to second Dan's motion reconsider.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's carried unanimous.
So 6B2, I pulled this item. It's the, if you want to follow along on page three of 6B2 or at the bottom, it's It's the planning commission meeting minutes for 501 Avenue of Caro. It's a senior housing complex for Shortcliffs. I'm asking that we continue this item until in the next city council meeting. We had a similar issue on the south end of town with the Alzheimer's facility that we approved. Our general plan states that we need to adhere to public safety tax or cost for all new construction to bear the true burden of that cost, and staff hasn't quite vetted that out yet. So I'm asking to give staff that two weeks' time to vet that out, and we'll move forward with that.
We need a second on that?
You want more clarification, Dan? So what happened when we wrote the general plan essentially was we recognized that our rising public safety costs were going to be the most crippling issue moving forward in future budgets. So what we did in that general plan was to write in a policy that states any future development, infill development, that's going to require an undue amount of public safety costs be borne by the developer or the property itself and not by the city or the citizens. So we directed that. We are currently moving forward that for a project on the south end of town, the Alzheimer's facility. And so I just want to make sure that that's incorporated in this as well. Staff has asked, they need some more time to review that policy and how to incorporate it into this approval. And so I'm just asking for an additional two weeks so we can do that.
So I have a motion from Chris Hamm, seconded by.
He's going to want to comment on it.
I've got a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Do we have a card on this?
Well, just now that it's been told, I guess I'd like the opportunity to speak.
Mark McGuire.
Good evening, Mayor Schwartz, members of the council, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly. Again, this is a project that's been in the works for 10 years. We started nine or 10 years, I should clarify. And we had a general plan that re-designated the site from a hotel site or timeshare to senior housing. We then had a specific plan amendment. Both of those items came to the council. It's an active senior community. It's not an Alzheimer's facility. It's meant to complement the golf course and have a younger. It's not a, you don't have food service. You don't have the types of things. We don't think we're going to have extensive, you know, additional ambulance services or those sorts of things. But we do have extensive conditions from code enforcement that were put into the project to make sure that we come up with security plans, management plans, et cetera. I don't know, I guess I would just would say that I don't think that it's appropriate for this council to, at this stage, continue the approvals of the project. We're now going to be going through the coastal commission, which is a long process, to pull the minutes and thereby somehow delay the approval of the project. I just, I would ask that the council let the project proceed forward in an orderly fashion. We had no people, no one came and opposed the project. We did notices to 200 residents around the community. We had support from the neighbors in the community. They liked the seniors much better than the hotel use that was there before. We did workshop, I mean, we did community meetings at the golf course. If you've been to the clubhouse, it is on its very last legs, and we cannot get this project going soon enough to bring that, to bring the golf club back to life. Thank you very much.
Just a quick question, Mayor, point of order. Is it appropriate to make a motion on an, well, I know you can make an appeal. A majority of the council can appeal a project from the planning commission, but can a majority of the council under the code just effectively press pause for two weeks? Can we do that?
I think either motion's in order. It could be called up tonight, but councilmember Ham wanted to just dust off the research and the analysis we had before he appealed it. So I think either way is in order tonight.
But that's in the code, because I know an appeal is in the code, but.
Yeah, a call up, yeah, yeah. But he'd just be continuing action on the minutes because that's the trigger for the deadline for the appeal. Not perpetually, but I think either option's available tonight, either to continue the minutes or to do the call up. Yeah. We could also ask that you cut to the chase and agendize it on call up, but it's up to the motion maker.
Can you rephrase one more time what you want the staff to bring back?
Yeah, so I'm just looking for direction from staff so they have time to clarify exactly what the general plan is and how that applies to this project. And maybe it's like Mr. McGuire said, and it doesn't apply, and then it just moves forward. But if it does, then obviously there's going to be some additional concern that we need to look into.
And the idea is that you'd see that before you filed a motion to appeal it.
Exactly.
Can't we do this concurrent to moving forward with the coastal commission? Looking at this policy, I mean, it's not, doesn't seem like it should hold up an applicant.
The conditions, you wouldn't be able to add that condition after this event if you decided to.
And there's extensive conditions from code enforcement already. Could we find out what the, do we know what those are now? Can the applicant come up? Can someone speak to those here or staff?
I'm inclined to see if there's a way for us to say, because all we're looking for is clarification that it fits the general plan or not. That's all he's bringing up. So can't we approve it conditioned upon the fact that staff verifies it's within general plan? And if it's not, then it's going to come back to us?
I'm looking at Scott, because we could do, I mean, that's an option, or we could table it for two weeks, come back, give the resolution as it relates to the general plan, and also address all the code enforcement conditions that are associated with the entitlements being proposed.
I'd rather do that and then see what the parallels were with the, with the last project that councilmember Ham thought was.
Well, I'll take your advice.
Determinative, all right? Yeah.
As opposed to like a conditional.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. We, I think we're going to find that there's some discretion in what happened in terms of making the finding that there was an additional need or additional burden on public safety.
All right. Okay, and we're good? All right. So we don't need any dig.
This one?
You didn't open public comment. So I'd like to comment. It'll be quick. You guys adopted Rosenberg's rules of order. Rosenberg's rules of order call for the council, before they start cross discussion, to actually make a motion. All I've heard for the last 10 minutes is cross discussion of what the motion should be. See, if you adopted a new set of rules, I think you should follow them. It would save us all a lot of time. Thank you. I believe I heard a motion. And I heard a second. All in favor?
No.
We have, it's 3-2 with Bain and Ferguson opposed.
And council, if we could just go back to the minutes just for a minute, we still need to approve them. So what I'll do though is, if you want to approve them as is, I'm going to go ahead and put a notation in the minutes that council subsequently called up that item. So if somebody goes to the minutes, they.
Well, we'd rather not call up the item. We'd rather just leave it the way it is and not approve the minutes tonight and have it come back for us in two weeks with the information we've asked for versus going to, that's, I thought that's what we agreed to do.
My understanding is you called up that item for the legislative advocacy services, a reconsideration. So you'll be able to vote differently, but the minutes, if you could vote to correct them, because they are, they are correct, I believe that's what you determined. And I'll just put that notation that the item was, that item was subsequently called up, not the minutes, just that item. I'm not explaining this very well. Okay, under the minutes where it's talking about the legislative advocacy services.
The minutes we already approved.
You didn't approve them though. You just, you just made a motion to reconsider the next meeting, the contract for the legislative advocacy services. The minutes are still.
Now we need a motion to approve the minutes as adjusted with the notation that we've called back for review on that item.
Then I'll second Steve's motion.
Okay. It's been made by me, seconded by councilmember Bain. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Item I.
Yes.
Is that six I?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll pass on that. I got a little confused with the agenda there, so I, mine doesn't apply to that anymore, so I'll wait for the world.
I'll move item.
Second.
Okay, I'll pass on that. I got a little confused with the agenda there, so I, mine doesn't apply to that anymore, so I'll wait for the world.
I'll move item.
Second.
Motion's been moved by Councilmember Hamm, seconded by Councilmember Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next item is report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer, concerning a contract award for janitorial services at city facilities.
Good evening, Mayor Schwartz and members of the council. Tom Bonnig at Public Works Director. I don't have a presentation. I'm only here to answer questions that you may have. This item's on new business because it's not exactly routine, so it didn't fit the consent calendar. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Pending, no, no cards or discussion, I'll move item.
Second.
Okay. Hold on. Oh. Yeah, I just want to confirm, you, you didn't mention this anywhere, but I assume we have a bond on this?
We will, and, and yeah, the staff report mentions when we get the contract for execution, we will put a performance bond with it.
Just thought I'd ask.
Thought you might be interested, yes. We're on it.
Okay, so I have...
Motion by me?
Motion by, okay, motion by Councilmember Hamm, seconded by Councilmember Bain. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Oral communications, part two. Did I hear Wendy say she wanted to speak on this item? Is that what she said?
No, this is for part two. Not the current. It's spoken in your oral communication.
You have to do that.
I'm usually a lot quicker on the draw than that, but I will come on. It was supposed to be eight or 10. I did eight. Eight copies?
That's fine.
That's in us. Okay, apologize for the agenda confusion. I, I wanted to speak on Councilwoman Ferguson's wonderful email that she sent to the city manager and the city attorney over the weekend, and I got a little confused because I was, I was not sure which agenda item to speak on that. So, and so as not to be cut off, I chose the oral presentation. In any case, the, I thought that we were talking about the Boise decision and the fact that we cannot enforce anti-camping ordinances, we cannot move people who do not have a place to stay from our public spaces because we don't have a local shelter bed to offer them. And for some reason, that public ruling, federal court ruling, got sucked into closed session. And so, this subject of us getting a homeless shelter got sucked into closed session, which it really should have been an, an open session item that we could have weighed in on. So, I'm going to do that now, and I'm hoping to be productive in that. And what you're looking at are some ideas that, for other homeless shelters that have already been built. I'm of the mind that we need it now or we need it yesterday, and I'll tell you why. Not because I want to get rid of bad homeless people in our town, but because right now we have no way to help a local homeless person in our town. We don't have anything to offer them. The sheriff can't take them to a bed in another town. Mercy House is, is not, been terribly productive in placing these folks, so our local young people who are having trouble, who need help, have no resources right now. So, I fully support the idea of an emergency temporary shelter. Two weeks, great. If we can make it happen in two weeks, wonderful, but it breaks my heart to think that we may have people in our own town who grew up here who have no resources and we can't do a thing for them. The other thing that an emergency temporary shelter would do would be to filter out those who are in our community, who are preying on our local community. And we know we have those people, too. So, if the moment that we can offer some resources to our local homeless folks, then we'll be very clear, almost immediately, who needs the help and wants the help and is willing to take the help, and who is just here to prey on our local people. We are looking at three different options. The first one is a, is Mercy House in Santa Ana. The first page shows you what the requirements are. It requires a local connection. That's very important, so we're not going to be expected to take care of everybody's homeless throughout the county. The second one is a shelter in Anaheim run by the Illumination Foundation. If you go to page three, it mentions very specifically referrals must have come, come through the police department, the county healthcare agency, or city net. So, this is not just some walk-up, you know, you know, full-tail boogie, no-holds-barred situation. These are people who have been screened. And the last one is a Salvation Army, same idea. So, I hope this is helpful to the city and to the council members. Thank you.
Maura Michaelak.
Thank you for hearing me again. Maura Michaelak of Capistrano Beach. This was how I was going to end, but I want to do this first so I make sure I get to it. I just want everyone to know, all of you to know, that I do not, nor have I ever condoned anarchy or encampments. Right now, I'm just speaking to you because I wanted you to have some of these faces in mind as you proceed with your plans. And as you do so, I would love to be of any help. I have valuable skills and insights that I think could benefit the process. So, I wanted to tell you a little bit more about some of the folks down at North Beach. When we left off, when I left off before, I was telling you about David, who came from out of state for his cancer treatment at Scripps. So, I just wanted to finish up with him, that, you know, he is going on the train on Mondays to get his chemo and then coming back to North Beach. I'm not sure how long he plans that to continue. So, I wanted to also tell you about some other folks. Eduardo, so he is the sweetest, quietest thing. He's a 10-year army vet. He's young. He did two tours in Iraq. He's 80% service-connected for PTSD and a problem with his knees. He, he lives in his car with his fiancee, who is also disabled. She has stage four cancer. They, they spend the, they spend their money because they do get disability. They spend it on a hotel for as long as it lasts. They also help out a lot of the other folks at North Beach with their money, and then when the money runs out, then they're, they just live in their car for the rest of the month. I want to also tell you about Alan. Alan went to school with my 20-year-old son, my son, oh, at St. Clemente High School. My son is a straight A student at Saddleback now in his second year, and Alan lives at North Beach, and he's a drug addict. I know that, I don't know his family, but I know that they're in St. Clemente, and they're crushed and scared to death that their son is going to end up dead. Jack is my age. We went to St. Clemente High School together. He's an alcoholic, and he's lived on the street off and on most of his life. Say what you will about him, but if you get to know him, you'd find him endearing. He's just like some of the folks at the Triangle on Saturday night. He's not always endearing when he's been drinking, but he's a struggling human, and today he's doing the best he can. One gal who recently arrived, she came when she was promised a job by a gentleman, oh, a man, I should say. It turns out there was no job, only an expectation of a relationship with him, and when she rebuffed that, she was left in the hospital with severe contusions to her face. Six weeks later now, she has no job, and you can still see the bruises on her face. Now, she's going to start looking for a job now that her face has cleared up. You know, there's, there was problems with her before, I believe, but I just want to say that's, that's where she is now. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker again would be Brad Melamut.
I'd just like to follow up on the last comment I made. I do believe the city is violating the law. What really disturbs me, and I think a lot of the citizens, is when we raise these issues, the city should respond. There's no Brown Act, and you can check with Mr. Smith. There's no Brown Act violation for responding. Yes, we did violate the law. No, we didn't. Yes, we're looking into it. You can comment, you just can't take action. Why is this council and the city attorney and the city manager always silent when people make comments like they did tonight? Why did you meet in closed session, apparently, and discuss this issue but not have an open session? And if you did meet, I'd like the city attorney to tell all the citizens why that was done in closed session rather than open session. And I'd like to hear tonight the three items that were discussed and the fourth item, because the same code that, that was listed says it must be disclosed. So, I don't think I'm that poor lawyer that I missed all this. I'm a pretty bad lawyer. I'm not up to Mr. Smith's level, but I can read code sections, and I can read the California book on it and municipal code. And I expect when I leave that Mr. Smith will tell us whether that was legal and both those issues, because that is within his rights to do, and if he doesn't, I think this council should direct him to. Thank you.
Yeah, everything that happened in Iowa is legal. The issues relating to homelessness were not on the public agenda, yet a case filed but not served on the city that includes all the allegations that relate to the, the statements made earlier as well as discussing in closed sessions properly before the council, how to respond to that case, how to, how to limit the city's liability in light of it, how to comply with Martin and B. Voice. You were all grist and legitimately part of your closed session.
The parties weren't disclosed, and the subject matter wasn't disclosed, both of which are required to be disclosed.
So, just, just to be clear, Scott, the case you're talking about was Orange County Catholic Worker versus Orange County at All, case number SACV.
Right. That's in six A, correct? The case we discussed. Yeah, the remainder of the cases, the, the case, the parties involved don't need to be disclosed if they don't know their potential parties, and that would impair our prosecution of the case. So, for the ones that don't disclose parties, that's always the case.
Do you have the parties that you could identify for the public here since...
Well, we don't need to because they don't know their potential parties, and we don't need to tip them off. That's not required under the Brown Act.
City manager?
Yeah, really quickly, just give you a couple of highlights of what's going on in the city. For Public Works, they completed the reconstruction of the Lapata Vista Hermosa Sports Field, baseball fields, infields number three and number four. This was through a collaborative effort with Little League, who helped fund this reconstruction. The fields are ready for play this weekend, and Little League is very excited. We also trimmed all of the palm trees in the pier bowl area, and we've started construction on West Palazada sidewalk project between Ola Vista and North El Camino. With regards to our utilities division, our department, excuse me, the environmental team conducted watershed model presentations to fourth-grade classes at Las Palmas Elementary School on February 26th and March 7th. This was a great opportunity to teach our kids about ocean water, how it can get polluted, and what they can do to keep it clean. They reached a total of 160 students and four teachers, so I commend Dave Rebandorf and his environmental team led by Cynthia Mallett. And then in community development, this isn't a good one, the community development department has released a public review draft of the pier bowl specific plan. It's been released for a 28-day public review and comment period before public hearings are held on the plan update. The planning commission is typically, excuse me, is tentatively scheduled to consider the draft specific plan at a public hearing on April 17, 2019, and the city council hearing is planned for May or June of 2019. A copy of the draft specific plan is available on the website. And then lastly, for the finance department, we conducted our LTFP workshop and got direction from the council as we begin our budget process. So, thank you.
City attorney?
I have nothing more to report tonight, thank you.
Okay, next is a presentation by Mayor Schwartz concerning pets available for adoption at the St. Clemente Animal Shelter.
So, as you and all those at home know, that we have a shelter we have here for the, our region down here south, and we have some animals that, especially this time of year and this time of weather, they could use a warm home. Our pet of the week here is Phoebe. Phoebe is looking to win the hearts of a new forever family. She's three-year-old female spade, short hair kitty with a beautiful blue fur. She's very sweet, and she seeks out attention from people, so she would give a perfect family a place to live. And then we have Alfredo, five-year-old neutered Chihuahua, and he's a very social little guy. He's lived with children in his previous home, and he gets along with most dogs. Please visit the animal shelter, and you can meet and greet with him. And then we have Lollipop, and I, I want to first say that I am not responsible for any names that are given to any of the animals. Lollipop is an energetic two-year-old female spade Siberian Husky. He loves playing with other dogs and can keep up with, and can keep up with anyone that can keep up with him. And he's, or her. Smart, quick to learn. The adopter needs to know that he should be an experienced dog owner. So, here's where you can look at what's going on. There is a spring vaccination clinic at low cost to you. It is on a day I can't quite read.
To be determined.
Oh, it's a to be determined, so we're going to let you know about it. And that's it for our animals. I do want to add one more thing, as long as I've got the dais at the desk, is this month I was asked to be principal for the day at St. Clemente High School, which I enjoyed very much. Our principal, Principal Carter, does walk around a lot. He was constantly on the move. I started thinking, well, maybe thinking a moving target can't get hit, but no, he had a lot of his students and teachers come up and talk to him, greeted him very well. He seems to have a good operation going. We're talking about all the changes coming down the road that they're going to be doing at the school. And then I was invited back by another class where they, students broke up in teams, and they came up with public project ideas. And I sat through their presentations. One of their presentations I commended on because the concept was something that I brought to Beaches, Parks and Rec when I sat on it, and that was establishing some public Wi-Fi locations where they could, where visitors, tourists, visitors, and even people that want to take a break down by the beach and go by the pier would have access to a public Wi-Fi. So, they had a great presentation on that. There's some great units out there. I suggested they maybe talk to local businesses to sponsor such, such stations and work it into a public-private partnership type of situation. So, and I also invited them possibly to come to city council and give a presentation someday when they worked it out, so hopefully we'll see that. And that's my, for the day.
Yeah, I just want to report out from the parking subcommittee. Laura and I met after last council meeting, and I think we came to a difference opinion. I'm not going to be recommending we bring that issue back up before council, but I think Laura has some concerns that she wants to bring up, so I'll let her voice those.
Yes, we're on opposing sides on that, but I, I think we should bring it back. I still believe that the folks, small contractors with the ladders, got wrapped up in a bigger issue in our ordinance that was really created for the larger fleet vehicles, commercial vehicles. So, I would like to recommend bringing it back for a redress.
So, I met with George as well, and I'd be willing to bring it back and have a discussion amongst all the council, but on a lighter note, I was interviewed by Boy Scout Hunter Carrato. Met with him. He was a tough but fair questioner. He was working on his, his citizenship badge, asked me a bunch of questions about the toll road, actually really insightful questions. I think he'll make a good council member someday. Clearly saw what the TCA was doing was wrong, so I commend Hunter for being engaged, and I invited him after he gets his badge to come present to the council on what he learned about the toll road. As Mr. Sun said, the Little League is having their opening day on Saturday with two new fields. They're having their parade at 8:30. I've been invited out to see if I can play catch with some of the kids, so if anybody wants to come laugh at the mayor pro tem, I haven't thrown a baseball in over 10 years, so probably going to be some pretty good material there. So, in any event, that's all I've got.
I would just mention to staff that earlier in the meeting you were given a, suggestions for an ordinance on bees and that that be given to the planning director, because that is an ordinance that we ask to come back to the city. So, that was all. I just want to make sure that staff didn't just file it, that it actually...
You should have shot you my song, "Change Cars."
Did they? Thank you very much. I missed that. Thank you. That is all.
What is the disposition?
What is the disposition on the commercial vehicle ordinance? Were you going to vote on that, or?
I don't know.
I heard one yes, one no?
Consensus, yeah. There was two, two yeses and whatever from there.
Well, I'd be willing to have staff take a look at it and see what, what, what they think before we, we address it as a council-level thing.
So white paper?
Yeah, something, yeah, yeah.
Staff will do a memo, kind of going over the history and the highlights of the ordinance and submit it to the council, and the council...
Yeah, and also local ordinance, similar ordinances around surrounding cities.
Local coastal cities have what they do.
Understood.
Because they've got similar tight street parking issues like we have, and that's the only reason why there's an issue with me, and it's whether yes or no, because of, we have such a tight crowded area down by the beach.
Understood.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to...
We do have a speaker card.
Oh, we do?
On the resolution.
Wendy?
I think we should continue. Let's just go forward.
Okay, he's shaking his head. No, I'm going to make, I'm going to read the, so I move that we adopt ordinance number 1617, entitled ordinance to the city council, the city of St. Clemente, California, adding section 8.86.040 to the St. Clemente Municipal Code relating to enforcement of camping ordinance system.
Is it? Motion by Councilmember Hamm, seconded by Councilmember Bain. All, can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, April 2, 2019, and the council chamber is located at 100 Avenue Presidio, St. Clemente, California. Closed session items will be considered at 5:00 PM. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.